Good evening and welcome to the Board of Education Candidates Night 2014, presented by Lacey Township High School Close Up Club. I'm your moderator for the evening, Samantha Grush. The candidates for Lacey Township Board of Education are Mr. David Bidwell, Mrs. Regina De Senza, Mr. Charles Kennis, Mr. Robert Claus, Mr. James Knoller, and Mr. James Letelier. These six candidates are vying for two spots on the Board of Education. Tonight, they will answer questions from student members of the LTHS Close Up Club in a pre-selected random order. This order was drawn earlier today and is as follows. Mr. De Senza, Mr. Kennis, Mr. Knoller, Mr. Claus, Mr. Bidwell, and Mr. Letelier. Each candidate will have three minutes to answer each question, and will have three minutes at the conclusion for the question and answer session to make a closing statement. Let's get started. Tori Campbell has the first question.
Hello, my name is Tori Campbell from the LTHS Close Up Club, and my question is, is with programs like edgenuity, blended learning, and block scheduling that help students achieve and process, do you have any additional programs you think would be valuable to the high school or other district schools?
First is Mrs. De Senza.
Yes, I do. I would like to see a tutoring program started in the lower grades, preferably before fifth grade, because that is when a lot of children could start to fall behind with reading, and that would help them for the future, because by the time they get to eighth grade, they have to have a very good command of reading and writing in order to excel in high school.
Thank you. Mr. Kennis?
Let me take that from a different approach. I had served on the Board of Education. I've watched a lot of programs develop, a lot of curriculum changes made. Each one, each one was supposed to generally enhance the program. We're going through another series of changes. Some will work, some won't work. I think the important thing, particularly New Jersey is basically known for continually tweaking the curriculums, and that's really what pushes us forward. I don't think there's any magic formula that's going to suddenly change the dynamics of education, but I do think that the constant education, the constant attention to the educational methods will push us forward at a more even pace. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knoller?
Yes. Interesting question. I'd like to say that I think with the block scheduling, basically new to our district, that it needs to be fully evaluated to make sure that it's really going in the direction that we hope it will go in, number one. The second thing that I think is very important is that you're coming under a lot of challenges now with new testing procedures. So if you have this new park testing, which is, you know, the Partnership for Assessment for readiness for college and careers, I think we really need to make sure that we have the adequate training of our staff to fulfill the requirements that the state is putting on this district. It's very important that they're fulfilled properly, and whatever we need to do to enhance the training for her sta- our staff to be really competitive with this park testing, I think is, to me, paramount, since we're, we're not getting out of it, we're not getting away from it. We're faced with the reality that it's here. So that's about all I have to add.
Thank you. Mr. Claus?
Yes, I, I think the, from what I've heard so far of block, the block scheduling, it's been going really well. I have two kids in school and they both like it a lot. I do think that it helps them learn a little bit more about what it's going to be like in college, you don't have the same class every day. If we could put together a program that maybe starts freshman year and kind of increases as time goes on, that focuses on what they'll be doing after co- after high school, more emphasis on getting into college or trade schools or whatever else they, you know, whatever else is successful after school, not just graduating high school and going home. So something that focuses more on the future after high school, I think it'd be a great program.
Thank you. Mr. Bidwell?
Yes. Thank you, Tori, that was a great question. I think one of the things we need to be careful of is that we focus on succeeding at the things that we've already decided to take on. It's kind of what I do in my business. I make sure that whatever we determine we're going to go and accomplish this year, let's make sure that we can succeed at those first before taking on other challenges. And I think we have a couple of things that are, there are some challenges that are facing us now. One of them is the Common Core. We need to make sure that we do a very, very good job at, at working at that and making sure that we succeed and that we are able to adopt all of those challenges before we move on to kind of deciding some other items and things that may benefit the students. Two other things that I'm aware of, though, that I think we should definitely highlight and make sure that, you know, students and parents take advantage of. One is that STEM offers tutoring. So students are able to go and get honors stu- honor students, you know, senior level honor students, to actually help them tutor for free throughout the year. So that's a great advantage, something that many students should try and take advantage of. And the other is, we're starting to do a very good job at SAT prep courses. So instead of having to go and, you know, go to Princeton Review or whatever, you know, tutor that you decide to take on for SATs, we actually offer it inside our schools. And I think that's something else that I would encourage all these students and parents of the students to take advantage of. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Letelier?
Yes. Any program that you're going to institute in education has to be thoroughly reviewed and thought out. I go back to the last time I served on the Lacey Board of Education. Our staff, the administrators, the teachers spent on the entire summer reviewing a K-8 reading program. And there were members of the board who did not support that program and other members like myself, Mr. Knoller, and Mr. Kennis did. That K-8 reading program was implemented to help improve the overall education, because reading is the foundation of education. You cannot do math or any other thing without a solid foundation. The block scheduling, I'm fully supportive of block scheduling, but you have to look at it and it has to be implemented in a way that's thorough throughout the entire school district. My son went to private school, had block instruction, and it prepared him for college tremendously. It gives students a great advantage. But the school he went to, the block instruction was, half a year you have four subjects, the second half you have four subjects. It gave the students more time to focus on the homework and the assignments and what they were learning. The other thing I like about true block instruction is it gives more classroom time between the students and the teachers, because instead of changing eight class subjects or classes in a, a day, it brought it down to four. So yeah, instead of forty-five minute periods, you had the double periods. Less time changing classes gave more time, less disruption. But again, as Mr. Knoller said, you have to prepare your staff to be also deal with whatever you're going to implement. And it's important to get the staff involved, not just the administration, but the teachers who are going to be in the classroom teaching it. Because no matter what the state mandates, no matter what the federal government mandates, if the teachers are not prepared to teach the subject and to teach it correctly, then it's not going to work.
Thank you. Now we'll have Sarah Fiedak presenting our second question.
Hi, my name is Sarah Fiedak. What is your viewpoint on the new park testing? How do you see this affecting Lacey Township schools? Is the park test a new factor in creating a school budget?
We'll start with Mrs. De Senza.
The park testing is very necessary, because recently I found out that most job applications are now online. They're no longer filled out in person or in writing. Everything's done online. So learning how to take tests online is very important. I believe the park testing is already built into the budget so that no new expenses are being undertaken at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennis?
I, I think the park testing is going to create a challenge for the district. I don't know if the staff is entirely comfortable yet with the procedures and the techniques that they're, that's, that's going to have to be utilized in the testing process. I'm sure there's also a great deal of anxiety in the district. I think that with any, any new change in testing methodology or techniques, I think that it does create a great deal of conflict for the district, and I think that we're going to have to do everything we can to help particularly the staff adjust to what's going to be required. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knoller?
Yes. I'd like to say, I think the fundamental reason why the state mandated park testing, which we are obligated to, to do here in Lacey Township, one of the primary reasons was they had looked at all the districts combined through the Common Core curriculums, and they had come to the conclusion that our high schools weren't preparing a lot of our students to do college work or college material properly. Too many remedial courses had to be taken at county-level colleges or even four-year-level colleges. So that's one of the reasons why it was enacted. Park testing is unique, because it's all computer-based, it's all on computers. Your, your exam is proctored or, or run by the teaching staff, but it's done on a computer. It also has two interesting components to it, other than just taking the test. The first component is that down the line, not initially, but down the line, it will be integrated that the teachers, especially in the language arts and math departments, will be evaluated by how well their students do on this park test. So they have a vested interest to really make sure that they do the best they possibly can, because ultimately their evaluations or part of their evaluations will be hinged upon the results. And the second thing that nobody really wants to talk about is that it's built into the, the language, the state language, that says basically this. Those districts are equal or comparable, K through twelve districts with comparable same amount of students, same socioeconomic backgrounds, could possibly lose state funding if our park scores are lower than those of neighboring districts of equal, of equal size and issuance. So there's a lot of things going on with park testing other than just taking the test and make sure our staff is prepared to take the test, making sure we have enough computers to give the test. All these things come into being where we have to properly fund it. There is money in this budget for park testing, but I think we need to allocate even additional funding for resources, primarily computers, so we can have every student be able to take the park test without having a hot seat, a school or area to rotate the testing cycle. So we have it, we're going to have it, it's not going away. You better be prepared to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Claus?
Kind of along the line with what Jim said. It, it's something that's coming, we have to do it. Change is not always easy, but sometimes it's a really good thing. It, it is a technology-based test, so I'm in the technology business. I know that that's the future and that's the way things are going. I think it's a good thing and I, I think we'll, we'll get used to it, it'll be good.
Thank you. Mr. Bidwell?
Thank you. Sarah, another great question. First of all, as every candidate has just said, it is mandated. So at this point, it's, it's less about will we and more about how will we? And we have to succeed, so it's critically important. A few things we need to be aware of. One is, it is a technological challenge. We certainly can't go and buy a Chromebook for every single student that is in this township, because we can't afford it and it's just not the right way to go about it. So we need to put together a plan that allows us to have the right equipment and only the right amount of equipment, so that we can fund it in the most efficient and effective way. That's one. Two is, we need to make sure we have the connectivity. So do we have sufficient Wi-Fi or sufficient internet access to make sure that as we're taking these tests, they're being reported accurately and that the information is getting out, getting through the broadband network? Something else to think about, you know, besides the technology challenge is the, the way that the test is implemented. The way I understand it is, as an example, a third grader will have to actually use typing skills to input an essay answer. And so the question there is whether or not this third grader has the ability and the skills developed enough yet to be able to effectively write an answer. So that's going to really fall on our teachers to prepare our students to make sure that besides the knowledge base, do they have the skills, the technical skills, to be able to answer the questions effectively and efficiently? And last, Mr. Knoller has said this now twice. First time he said it was a couple of weeks ago. And I, I've tried to look for this clause where it says that if we don't perform well, we get our funding cut. And I simply have not been able to find that. That certainly doesn't sound logical to me, that a school would get their, or a school system would get their funding reduced if their students don't perform to a level that, that the state requires or, or expects. So again, I'd like to see some more evidence about that. I have not been able to find it and I have looked. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Letelier?
Yes. It's also my understanding, depending on the results of this testing, that there is a possibility of losing funding in the future. Once again, we're faced by another state mandate, but the failure of the state to pay. The state of New Jersey has failed to live up to its constitutional obligation. The legislators have failed to provide a thorough and efficient education for the students in public schools through equal distribution of funding. I disagree about the technology. My son, as I said, went to private school, and since grade school, he had a laptop, he had Wi-Fi, and they took their test all the way through grade school, high school, and in college. That is the way of the future. It's not the future in private schools, it's already here and it has been. We need to make sure that's available to the students and staff in our school's districts here. We talk about the cost of outfit and a laptop. What about the cost of all the textbooks that mostly never get to use? I mean, when I'm paying three hundred and something dollars for a textbook in college for my son, and the teacher opens it once throughout the semester, and then when you go to sell it back at the bookstore, they tell them, oh, we're on a new edition, we're not using it. So when you compare the advantages of the technology, and most students today have been grown up, whether they're texting, whether they're on the computer, I still have a dial phone, but you know, it's, that's me. But when you look at these type of programs and any testing that's mandated, it has to be funded. And unfortunately, the state of New Jersey continually fails to meet their funding requirements. And I'm old enough to remember, the first weekly lottery in the state of New Jersey, when it came into play, was going to fund public education. That was one weekly lottery back in the sixties. How many lotteries do we have in the state of New Jersey and we can't fund our education? It's pitiful. And it's time for school boards and local governments to get on the legislators' backs to make sure they mandate funding.
Thank you. Now we'll have Kayla Billick with our third question.
With the increased drug testing program, have you seen a reduction in drug use among students? Would you consider drug testing at the lower grade levels? Will the drug dogs return?
Well, start with Mrs. De Senza.
Could you repeat that question again? It was a three-part question and I want to make sure I cover the whole thing.
With the increased drug testing program, have you seen a reduction in drug use among students? Would you consider drug testing at the lower grade levels? Will the drug dogs return?
The drug dogs are coming in from the Ocean County Prosecutor's Office. The school district has nothing to say about that. That's being randomly done by the prosecutor. I did think about drug testing in seventh and eighth grade, because we know drug use starts before high school in a lot of cases. And what was the first part of the question again? Have I seen a reduction? I think that would be impossible for the average person to see. I think only school personnel would be aware of that. Thank you.
Mr. Kennis?
Yeah, the drug, the drug program is, is interesting. I'm, uh, we have had a year of drug testing right now. As far as the general public goes, I don't know whether we have a drug problem in the high school or we don't. The public knows nothing about the testing. No results have been issued. We're increasing the number of tests we're going to start giving. We either have a problem that no one wants to tell us about, or there is no problem. I would assume that, for the sake of argument, that there is a problem. And I, I do think that the school probably is taking the right approach with, with those people who are, are testing positive. And I do think that programs such as the drug program and also the, the drug testing should be continued. I'm not sure I would lower the grade requirements than we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knoller?
Well, this is a pretty controversial issue, really, because I think if you talk to every parent in this district, they're concerned about perception of drug problems, the real drug problem itself, because they've, either in their own family or their neighbor's family, they've seen a problem or dealt with the problem. And how does this affect education? This is a community problem, it's just not a school problem. It's a community problem and it's a county problem, it's a state problem. But here in Lacey, apparently we have tested in approximately three hundred students. At least that was released at the one board meeting. Again, the results weren't released as to what percentage were positive or negative. I would definitely continue a, a policy of, of drug testing. I think we need to really work as close as we possibly can with our local law enforcement and county enforcement people to develop a, a procedure, if you will. I mean, I think it takes the, the board, the superintendent and the administration to come up with a viable procedure that really would be acceptable and show the community some results of that. So lowering it to lower levels, when we really haven't come to grips with the levels we're dealing with right now as far as the results or tabulation of those results or how they impact the students in this school, until those things are known, I think we should just work on getting those done before we ever think about lowering it to a different level or, or lower level. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Claus?
Like I said before, I have two children that are in this school. I ask them a lot of questions about this. And do I think the drug testing is helping reduce the, the issue we have? Well, first of all, there is, there is a problem. If we have one kid doing drugs, it's a problem. I do think that the drug tests are probably helping reduce it. Just the fear of possibly being tested is enough to keep people from doing it. Aside from that, it's also a good excuse for a kid who wants to stand up to peer pressure. He's got a reason now. Do I think we should pass that down to the lower grades? That's a question I think would take a lot more thought. I think there's a benefit to that. I don't know if it's a good enough benefit. I know there is an issue down there as well. We do need to figure out a way to fix that. That would, that's something I think would have to put more thought into. Drug dogs, I would be okay if there was a drug dog here every day. I think that anybody who thinks it's okay to bring drugs into school is somebody that, I don't want to say shouldn't be here, but somebody that we need to really work on. So if we had that drug dog in here every day, walking around, I would be okay with that.
Thank you. Mr. Bidwell?
Yeah, thank you very much, Kayla. Let's separate the conversation. The, as it relates to the drug dogs and punitive types of investigations, those are not controlled by the school board. That is, you're talking about the prosecutor's office, you know, and DEA, et cetera. It's not really something that the Board of Ed or the superintendent or anybody is able to manage. As it relates to the random drug testing program that we have, that program is established to really do two things. One is to allow students who don't want to start trying drugs and don't want to bend to peer pressure, to have a built-in excuse why they can't. Because they participate in extracurricular activities, they're not, they can say, hey, I would love to, but you know what? I can't, because I play football or I play tennis or whatever. So that's one of the components of the program. The other component of the program is to help the students that have tried stop using, okay? It's a confidential program, so we're never going to know and nor do we want to know how many students were caught and what were the consequences and all that kind of stuff, because the, the program itself is, is designed to be confidential so that it's there to help students, not to catch them in the act and then punish them for that act, okay? As far as lowering it, bringing it to lower grades, I've spoken to several people in administration, and they believe that if there's, if we want to continue to make an impact on drug use within our school system, we should consider testing eighth graders and possibly seventh graders as well. I'm not sure that I could give that answer today, how I feel about it. It certainly is a sensitive topic. And as you get younger and younger with students, it becomes more and more sensitive. But it's definitely something that is going to be on the docket to be considered this year. And the last thing I'd like to say is exactly what Mr. Claus said, which is, we definitely have a problem, because if there is one student using drugs, it's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Letelier?
It's a subject I have a little bit of background and knowledge in. As a retired police officer, I'm currently a police director in Mercer County. And I'll talk about some of the things we're doing and some of the educational things. But I also trained narcotic detection dogs for ten years. And when I served on the school board, I was told we didn't have a drug problem. The dog died of old age, never saw the road, because Lacey didn't have a drug problem. But yet, we ranked thirteenth in heroin overdoses this year and eleventh last year. We have a drug problem. And I'll go back, and this is not criticizing the current administration or system, but this is history in its fact. I sat on a board and reread the school report card where we had one drug incident, but yet, throughout the year, we had two hundred and seventy-eight students test positive for drugs. But yet, the report card showed one and went unquestioned, because they took the help. They were called friendly referrals, so they don't count. Really? I don't have to tell any student sitting here, you know there's drugs in the schools. You know it's happening. And where I'm at with the East Windsor School Districts, I am with the superintendent and all the principals of the schools that are in Hystown, instituted foot patrols throughout the school, welcomed by the parents, welcomed by a lot of the students, because it's now displacing a lot of the drug activity. There is a drug problem in this state. Lacey Township is no different. Unfortunately, the news show us that we're up there. Now, testing in lower grades, I'm part of a group out there in Mercer County, which is a combination of drug and alcohol addiction programs. And it started for Hystown, and it's an outreach program for prevention and educations of drugs. Statistics are showing us that students in fifth grade are doing drugs. So I'm not saying abroad, test every student, but we have to teach our staff, and that's some of the things we're doing out there, to be aware of what to look for. And that's crucial. The worst thing any community, any school district can do is bury their heads in sand. The drugs are here, we need to combat it. And yes, one of the things when you test or take any proactive response in law enforcement, your stats, statistics are going to go up, because you're identifying a problem, and that's what you want. And they are confidential. We never got to know what students tested positive, you got the initials. But the important thing is to know what the actual numbers are and what's going on in your district. Drug dogs, one drug dog cannot search this building. This building, I'm going to tell you from experience, would take ten dogs to do a sweep. So when people say, well, the drug dog came through and it didn't find anything, by the time it got down to the second quarter, it was already exhausted. So we got to be upfront, we got to be honest, and we got to identify the problem and work together as a community, and then we can resolve the problem.
Thank you. Presenting this evening's final question is Alexis Raid.
Hi, my name is Alexis Raid. If elected to the board, what programs or ideas would you include or eliminate from the budget? Describe your educational spending philosophy.
That's a very good question. I'm not really sure exactly what I would add or take away, but I know the STEM program could be enhanced, probably. The science, technology, engineering, and math program is very important. It helps children excel in a lot of different ways. I have other ideas for the budget, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't involve cutting any programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kennis?
We have, we're, we're dealing with a limited pool of money. And I, I think that, in, in reality, the Board of Education basically has to apply the emphasis in those areas that they think are important. And I think right now, we probably should be putting as much effort and resources as we can on, on classroom education. I, I think that's really, that's really where we're going to show the most improvement. I think it also helps the student-teacher relationship, and I think that ultimately, that's really what's good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knoller?
I guess the first thing to do is try to identify those, those areas where you really would need added curriculum or updated curriculum. So I guess, even though you have curriculum committees now in the President Board of Education, we've had them for years in the Board of Ed, I think establishing a, a committee that would deal specifically with the administration, the superintendent, members of the board, and the staff to really try to identify the areas really where we have weaknesses in, whether it be science, math, the arts, languages, as to how it will be related to, I'm sure what's going to happen now this new testing that we're about to embark on is going to validate some of those weaknesses we have. And when we find out where those weaknesses lie, that's where we should be allocating funding or additional funding to upgrade our curriculum, to make us more competitive, not only within the district, but competitive outside the district and make ourselves more of an academic model than what we are presently today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Claus?
Can you say the first part of that question, man?
If elected to the board, what programs or ideas would you include or eliminate from the budget?
Well, I guess I'd have to be elected first. And I think once elected, I would, I would spend more time learning about what programs we do have. I think the programs that are important are the ones that are a benefit to the students. This is, this is school. We're here to learn. We're here to prepare ourselves for the future. It's our responsibility. You know, we, we were here, or I was here. I learned here. It prepared me for the future. I think it's our responsibility to make sure that the students get that same opportunity. So whatever programs we have that are in that benefit are the ones we need to keep. As far as my spend philosophy, same thing again. It's all about the students. It's about the students and the schools. The money that we spend should be focused on the benefit of the students, making a better opportunity for them to learn here, and a better opportunity for them to grow outside of, outside of school.
Thank you. Mr. Bidwell?
Sure, thank you. Alexis, I think it's hard for any candidate to sit up here today and tell you what they would cut or what they would add without having goals and objectives set for their, the next year, the next two years, the next three years. In my business, each, as you approach the end of each year, you set goals and objectives for the upcoming year. You have longer-term goals for the, for the next two to three to five possible years. And I think that it's really important that we take a look and say, what, if we're going to implement certain new ideas and cut other ideas, are they tracking toward our ultimate goal? And obviously, in this scenario, our ultimate goal is to give you the best possible education we could ever give you. And so I think that's where I would start. I would start with setting up a three-year goal, three-year plan. And I would set back, and I would say, okay, let's get together and talk about. Obviously, the plan at the end of the day should be getting our children ready for post-high school. Whether that's going to trade school, whether that's going to college, whether that's embarking on a career that they've already chosen. But those are the types of programs that we need to institute, which need to be fresh and they need to be new. And those are the types of programs that we need to find ways to fund, which will therefore somehow, some way, we, we need to be responsible to our taxpayers. So we can't just keep adding and adding. And we need to find places where we're able to reduce spending so that we can stabilize taxes, but at the same time, be tracking toward the ultimate goal, which is to make sure that you and the rest of your, your students that you go to school with are getting the best possible education we can offer you.
Thank you. Mr. Lotelier?
Yes, as an individual board member, you do not institute any policy. It's a collective group that works on them through the staff, the administration, the superintendent, the teachers. And my philosophy is fiscal and educational accountability. Every dollar that comes into the school district should be accounted for to make sure that we are spending it and getting the best bang for the buck, as I said. I had a policy and a philosophy when I was on the school board. I didn't just attend the board meetings. I went out and I intermingled throughout the week with the staff. I had a great opportunity being a law enforcement officer, so I was always in town. But you got to listen to the staff, and how are the policies that we're putting in place affecting them and their ability to teach the students? But the other unique thing was having student government body representatives on the dais with us and discussing the problems and concerns that they had, what's working, what's not working. And one of the philosophies I always had, when we were looking to hire teachers, and I know what the state law is, but two people of equal statute and qualifications, and I have someone that went through the district, they know the strengths, they know the weaknesses, and they can help improve the future. What programs are you going to institute? And I go back to when I served on the board, you have to be open-minded, and you have to have a vision. When I discussed the outdated home ec. programs in education at the time that were 75 years old, and I was criticized that that was a program in the middle school that I didn't see needed. But yet, when we built the new middle school, there was no home ec. labs. And that was approved by the same people that criticized me for having a vision to get rid of an outdated program. Today's technology changes, but I will say this. If on the board, I will push technology, science, and math, because that is the future. And without those three key components, the district is not going to continue to succeed. And my goal, my ambition for this district, there's no reason that we can't shoot for the moon and we can't be in the top 10% of school districts in the state of New Jersey. And anything less than that, we're robbing you of your futures. And that should be the goal and the ambition, that we should put the same emphasis on education, actually more emphasis on education than we do some of our extracurricular programs. They're great programs, and they've been successful. But they're successful not because they're always the greatest athletes. They're successful because of the involvement of the community, the parents, the staff, and getting you, as a student, to achieve your maximum capacity. Those are what we need. We need a new philosophy and a new direction that, yes, the students are number one, and that's where we need to go, but we need to know that every dollar we have is being spent wisely and properly.
Thank you. At this time, we will allow three minutes for each candidate's closing statement, starting with Mrs. DeSenza.
Thank you very much for inviting us all here tonight. I would like everyone to know that I'm the most independent candidate running for a school board seat, because my campaign is entirely self-funded. I want this to be 100% clear. No one has financed my campaign. I have not taken contributions from anyone. I will be an advocate for the taxpayers, most especially the students of Lacey. My family has resided in Lacey for the past 15 years. We have two sons. Chris attends Lacey High School, and Louis is a senior at Richard Stockton College in Pomona. For the past 12 years, I have been attending all Lacey MUA meetings, planning board meetings, township committee meetings, and school board meetings. I also attend PTA, PTSA, PTO, PTC, PTSO. Of all the schools my children have attended, and I am well aware of what is going on in Lacey Township. In 1985, I graduated from John Jay College of Criminal Justice with a bachelor's, come loud, in criminal justice, with a self-designed minor in business management and accounting. I subsequently took 12 education credits and worked for a few years as a substitute teacher in the New York City school system. I stopped working in 1994 to become a stay-at-home mom, and I now consider myself retired. Currently, the Lacey school budget is running at about $71 million. The district has been struggling with below-average ratings for a number of years now. Everyone knows a good school district is very important for property values. Lacey can't go on as it is at the present time with the cost of educating each student hovering at approximately $16,000 per year. That's far more than the cost of private school tuition. Our district enrollment, as of last night's superintendent's report, was 4,444 students. If the school district were a corporation, it would have been out of business a long time ago. Stockholders demand a decent return on their investment, and the Lacey taxpayers are no different. The Lacey school tax rate has increased 3.35% in 2012, 7.94% in 2013, and 3.19% in 2014. This is way above the recognized national inflation rate. During this time, the total assessed value in Lacey has steadily decreased by millions. The decrease in assessed value does not yet include all sandy damage, which will critically impact the 2015, 2016 taxes. School taxes account for 61.9% of the total property tax bill and it's growing. Did you know the Lacey school district has the taxpayers locked into the state health benefits plan by contract? The benefits expense now looms at about $15.5 million per year. It was approximately $8 million in 2004, almost double in 10 years. I do not propose to cut anyone's benefits, but the benefits need to be administered in a way that is fair to the taxpayers. The current system in place is not sustainable, nor is it a good deal for the taxpayers who are footing the bills. Thank you very much, and please don't forget to vote.
Thank you. Mr. Kennis?
Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm a college graduate, longtime Lacey resident. I've been an active participant in the business community and former board member. My children are now my grandchildren. Both attended the Lacey schools. And I've been generally happy with the education that they had and are receiving presently. In fact, sometimes I'm, I'm a little amazed, particularly with my grandchildren now, at how much they, they learn at a young age. And I think a lot of that is attributable to the programs and dedication of those in, in the district. I think Regina did touch on, you know, on a question of quality or perception of quality. When we were on the Board of Education in the 90s, Lacey Township SAT scores ranked number two in Ocean County. The only town that beat Lacey Township in Ocean County was Point Beach. We were ahead of everyone else. We had the, the one rating come out by the Stalletzer, I don't know whether it was a year or a year and a half ago, which apparently rated the school district as a D. And I understand why a lot of people downplayed that, that rating, and I, I suspect that maybe it wasn't totally fair. Unfortunately, we've just had another rating in New Jersey Monthly Magazine in August. And they rated the 339 districts in New Jersey that are K through 12. We're number 211 at a 339, which means that we're better than 37% of the districts in New Jersey. 63 are better than us. And I don't know what grade I'd give us for that. But that, you know, that is a consideration. The other thing that happens with those generalized tests is I, there are different, there are different grades of students. We, we have those who love to come to school, are eager to learn, and just inhale everything that's offered. And for them, the system is absolutely spectacular. And if you're one of those, you have it made. The problems occur with those who don't want to quite learn as quickly or as receptive to what, what's being offered, and that's creating a challenge. And that's really part of the challenge that's facing not only Lacey Township, but it's also facing New Jersey, and it's facing the country. Thank you. I understand from my previous experience how the board operates, and what ability and tools board members have in effectuating change, and what's required to keep the proper balance between the administration, staff, students, and the public. With proper leadership oversight and support, public education can indeed become an effective means with which we can meet our future challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Knoller?
Well, thank you, and thank you, Close Up, for having us. I want to thank every other candidate here that's running for the Board of Education for them putting themselves out there to try to become a member. What do I have to offer? Well, I've been in the town 45 years. I hold degrees from Rutgers University, proud two, two children and five grandchildren. I looked around and I said, well, what, what really is this all about? This educational system that we have in Lacey? And then I refer back to 1981, those of you old enough to remember that, when we opened our high school here. This town had an enormous amount of pride when the high school opened up. Everyone was behind having our own K through 12 independent district. The pride was everywhere. The staff was unbelievably proud of the fact that they were a part of a new system. And what happened was, in a short period of time, like Mr. Kennis said, in the early 90s, I was on the Board of 8995. In a short 10-year window, we moved from obscurity, nonexistence, to number two in our SAT scores, only beaten out by Point Place and Beach. But even more important than that, we had the lowest per capita cost. We were the lowest per capita cost of not only Ocean County, Monmouth County, and Atlanta County. So you can have the best of both worlds. We had high academic performance, and yet we had a low cost per student to the, to the taxpayer base here in Lacey. What I want to see occur again is that. I want, I don't want to be an if school system. If you go to college, I want to be when you go to college. I want the staff to be instilled with that morale, the highest spirit of morale, to say, everybody, when you go into college, you want to become a great electrician. I don't care what you want to do, but it's when you're going to do it. We have to get together with that type of pride again. We need to formulate that thought process so we go forward and succeed in doing that. We have the staff here. We certainly have a competent staff. Our support staff is excellent. We have the people to do it. We just need leadership to get us there. Leadership from the school, within the school system, and leadership on the Board of Education. And I believe we can accomplish that in a realistic period of time. I look forward to you giving me some support, and I hope you all go out and vote on November 4th. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Claus?
Thank you. And like the other guys too, thanks everybody for coming out. Thank you, Close Up, for the opportunity to do this. I do hope that the folks that are at home take the time to watch this, to learn a little bit more, a little bit of information about myself. I've lived in Lacey for pretty much my whole life, about 40 years now. Went through the entire school system, back in the days of Cangelosi, back in the days when he was on the board. Thank you. It's, it's a great place to be. The town is a great town. There's a lot of conversation about how bad things are. Of course, there are areas that we can improve on, but there are areas that we are doing well on too. For those of you that'll watch last night's school board meeting, there was a presentation that was given that I think was pretty good. We, we're heading in the right direction. I guess maybe we've had a couple tough years, but we're working our way out of that. Like I said, there are things that need to be fixed. If I were elected to the school board, I'll say it 100 times, my focus is on the students and the schools. We are here, we have an obligation to, to, to teach our kids, to make them prepared for the future. It's not an easy world out there. I've been out there for a little while now, and it's tough. So you guys need to learn everything you can now so that you can be ready to go to college, or trade school, or military, or whatever it is you do. We need you to be prepared to go do something. So any decision that I make while I'm on the board, I'll make it with the students and the schools in mind. So on November 4th, Election Day, vote 1 and 6. Rob Claus, Dave Bidwell, and we look forward to the opportunity to serve you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bidwell?
Yeah, thank you to the Close Up Club as well. You're a perfect example of what's great within our school system. You know, 8 o'clock on a Tuesday night, I'm sure you probably still have homework that you have to get back to, but you're here and you're participating in some of the greatest activities that we have. So I thank you very much for putting the time and effort into this, this event. Rob Claus and I are both young parents with young children in our school system, and we felt it was our obligation to step up and put forward the effort to help lead this school system forward. We've both been the beneficiaries through our, through our children of a wonderful education. Both of our daughters are headed off to college next year, and they've had a tremendous experience here. It's important that we continue that, that tradition. So Rob and I are committed to doing that, and, and that's what we plan on, on starting in January. I think what's going to come along with that is, is fresh new ideas. You know, no disrespect to, to the 1980s and the 1990s, but we're a long way away from that. And the world has changed, and we need to change along with it. There's no doubt we have work to do within our school system. We will always have work to do, whether we're ranked number two or ranked number 200. We need to do better. And we owe that to you guys, to the students. Neither Rob Claus nor myself have conflicts of interest. What that means is that we don't have any relatives that work for the school system. Why that's important is because we can vote on and participate in every single topic, every single issue that comes before the board. We do not have to abstain from any votes. So again, we plan on being very, very active within the board. We both have pretty strong business backgrounds. Together combined, we probably have about 150 employees. And why I think that's important is that it has given us the opportunity to really learn some big lessons that we can bring out to the board. One of them being the fact that you really need to create an environment with respect, with cooperation, and create compromise. We need to have everybody in this room, everybody on the board, students, teachers, administration, we all have a stake. Taxpayers, we all have a stake in the success of our school system. So we need to get together. We need to understand that, you know, negotiation is not we win, you lose, or you lose, we win. Actually, that, that was both ways I said we won, right? We win, you lose, or you win, we lose. It's, negotiation is compromise. It's getting together and, and making sure that we're going to be effective as a team moving forward. That's how morale gets repaired. That's how morale ultimately translates into good, good education opportunities for, for students. I guess the last point I would talk about is that Rob and I have a lot of experience in budgeting. Both of our businesses, you know, each and every year, we need to manage a pretty large budget, and we understand that it's very important to stabilize our taxes so that we're not constantly spending more and spending more. We need to find ways to do more with less, or do more with what we currently have. Other than that, please, on November 4th, remember to vote for Bidwell and Claus, top and bottom, lines 1 and 6. And thank you very much again for your time today.
Thank you. Mr. Lotelier?
Yes, thank you. Just for those who don't know me, my background, I've been here 45 years. I have a master's in public administration and not profit organizations, and I have a bachelor's in human services. I've had a few small businesses early on in my life, but I have nearly 30 years of public service. And I can tell you, and I know Mr. Knoller and Mr. Kennis know because they both come from a business background, but they also have the experience in government. Government doesn't run like a business. It's not designed to run like the business. And there's so many obstacles and mandates, as we all know from the states, and no matter what you want to try to implement here... what you want to try to implement here, you have state mandates and federal mandates. So, you need people that understand the government aspects of it. And while some of us may have been on the board in the eighties and nineties, history has a way of repeating itself. And things come full circle, and we're in a situation, we broke away from Central Regional High School to become our own district. And as was said earlier, there was a lot of pride, a lot of bro, prosperity in the academics of this school district. We can walk those halls, this is one of the most largest high schools that I've seen in recent years. Everything's new, everything's up to date, we've got a great school system, but bricks and mortars do not educate children, the teachers do. And you cannot have a house divided and accomplish the goals. And I believe that this house is divided, from the staff that I talk about, the frustration, the low morale, and no matter how much you love you're doing your job, you try to go to work every day with a positive attitude, but you know if you're being beaten up, or if you're being ignored, or you don't have the input to change things, that frustration will filter out into the students. To go to the technology aspect again, when you buy laptops, you could also download textbooks. Electronic textbooks are much cheaper than the paper books. So, if we can save in buying paper textbooks and buy the electronic books, then we can afford the laptops and the Wi-Fi for the students to each, and I believe it's crucial that each student have their own laptop. And districts have to start focusing. And like I said, I saw the advantages of my son since grade school, all the way through his master's program, he had the opportunity to have that availability. But this district will not move forward without new leadership, new thoughts, but knowing that historic perspective, where we came from, so we don't keep making the same mistakes. And quite frankly, I'm very frustrated, and I haven't come to board meetings in years, you get to watch them at home on TV, but what's changed in the last couple of years, this district is divided, this district has some bad things happen recently, and I think it's time for change, and people that are going to hold the administration accountable. Thank you.
Thank you. The LTEHS Close Up Club would like to thank all of the candidates for coming out to tonight's meeting, and please remember to go out and vote on November fourth. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.[1787.76]